Yes. So, if you could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. And the American, the flag is over in this direction now. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. I'm so glad that all of you have come out to hear about the science curriculum. This is always the favorite meetings that board members have, and that is to recognize students for their achievements and teachers for the guidance they give to those students during their sessions, if you will, and their projects. Just as a quick housekeeping, as we go through this process, as you know, we always take photos of you for appropriate framing, and will, people will ask you to line up over there near the American flag so that we can accomplish that. With that in mind, the Cabe Communication Awards, Mr. Robert Trefai, who's a member of the State Board of Education. Welcome to our Board of Education.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. I appreciate Chairman Dwyer and Superintendent Jones asking us to come tonight. The Connecticut Association of Boards of Education is comprised of boards of education all throughout the state of Connecticut. I'm, I actually chair a Board of Education for the technical high school system, that's why I'm involved, but I live in Fairfield. And I look at your websites and all that kind of stuff, and it's really been impressive. The, there is a communication award that we give out to various districts for some of the communication efforts they have. And there's two awards we're gonna, they're gonna present tonight. One is for your website, which is really very, very manageable. I've looked at a lot of websites, and this one you can navigate really well. I end up finding, I, even now I go on to see when the vacations are and everything else, so we can plan some of our activities around that, so really appreciate that. The other one is for the consumer science, consumer science web presentation that was done. And there's a link to it on your website, and I watched that, and I must admit, I got hungrier and hungrier every, when I got to the end. And the last part, if you've not seen it, is about cakes of America. And that will throw you right off the edge if you haven't had an awful lot to eat, because the cupcakes at the end are just spectacular. So if, I don't know how you want to do this, but the folks who did all this work, I understand, are here, so we're gonna ask them to come up, so we can give them that. Do you want it, Superintendent, do you want the plaques, or do you want them, or? Okay. This is the one for the, the website. Congratulations. This is the Family and Consumer Science Curriculum Revision. Congratulations. And these, the, these awards are in the name of Bonnie Carey, who was the longtime Communications Director for the Association for 47 years, who unfortunately passed away last year. So, these are in her honor.
Tony, does Mick have a camera? So why don't you join them for photos? Now, I see some people coming forward, so just because the first camera clicks, you're there until the rest of the paparazzi in this crowd have finished. Okay, thank you. So now we have a presentation of student recognition. And we have three staff members who want to recognize, and we wish to recognize, those students. So I'll start with the first one, All-State and All-National Musician Honorees, presented by Ms. Sarah. Sarah Hoffa, there you are.
Thank you. We're so excited that 34 of our student musicians from both high schools made the All-State Festival. We had 88 students qualify for Western Regionals, which is a huge achievement for our town that we're so proud of, and we were thrilled that 34 of them were accepted at the All-State level. So I'm gonna call them up, I'll start with Fairfield Ward students that are here tonight. Zoe Gupta for the clarinet. Justin Harris, Justin Harris for trombone. Molly Scattonato for bass clarinet. Hannah Allman for trumpet. Michael Chapin for snare and accessories. Henry Friedman for French horn. Harry Greeney Green for violin. Dana Calamari, an alto in the choir. Mallory Elliott, a soprano in choir. Marie Folda, an alto in the choir. Katie Harris, soprano. Emily Hoffman, soprano. Maggie Cruz, soprano. Nicole Park, alto. Claire Regan, alto. Paige Sokol, soprano. Elizabeth Winter, soprano. And Kevin Zenidis for jazz trumpet. We're missing several, it's a crazy season. Oh, McGai, McGai Choudar, sorry. violin, thank you. Come on up. We're missing several tonight, so lots of sports activities. These are our Ward All-State Musicians. Okay, and I'll call up the Fairfield Ludlow High School All-State Musicians. Those that are present, come on up. Maybe we could just hold our applause till the end, because there are a few. Lily Aston, clarinet. Sophia Buches, trumpet. Alex Boe, tenor. Kieran Brown, alto. Blaze Carter, tenor. Lauren DeWitt, trombone. Nick Fetch, bass clarinet. Gerald Kim, violin. Christian Kinney, snare and accessories. Samuel Keck, French horn. Thomas Longo, violin. Maddie McDermott, alto. Tess Noonan, flute. Alexandria Terrio, alto. And Thomas Roberts, snare and accessories. And then, I don't know, they must be booked. Just quickly to acknowledge, we had one student make the All-National Choir, and that's Marie Folda.
So from, for state champion athletes from Fairfield Ludlow High School, Todd Parnas is here. Together with the headmaster. Filling in.
Our athletic directors are all at athletic events, so lacrosse games, et cetera. So we're gonna introduce to you some of our Ward and Ludlow athletes today who also received All-State honors. So first we'll call up our co-op team from both Ward and Ludlow, our girls' ski team, and our two coaches, Mr. Kierikon and Mr. Kierikon. So they'll do a great job of introducing the girls to you. This is their sixth consecutive state championship, and eight out of 10 years.
Thank you, David. The, the girls' ski team, not only did they, not only did they win the state championship this year, they had an undefeated record of 22-0, and they were undefeated in, in the league as far as the league championship went. So we, we had another great year, and thank you for all your support. So, we have most of them here tonight, but I'll read off the names of everyone on the team. Ava Amuso, Caitlin Benza, Kelsey Brown, Heather Clark, Elizabeth Greger, Ellie Dagel, Lila Denny, Leah Farrington, Michaela Fleming, Samantha Galuzzo, Alessandra Grabs, Michaela King, Julia Langland, Emma Loren, Olivia Lind, Hayden Mathis, Rob Mitchell, Ally Nye, Tess O'Connor, Jess Riley, Maddie Riley, Sierra Salz, Amy Sforza, Liz Yvades, and our manager Sophie Bates.
Thank you. So we have a couple other athletes from Ludlow to recognize tonight. First off, we'd like to recognize Sarah Grinnold. Sarah plays first in the Double-L State Championship in both the 50 Free and the 500 Free. She was also a member of the 200 Free Relay Team that placed second. Sarah, individually, also went on to win the National Championship in both the 50 Free and the 100 Free. Right, was it the 100, is the other one? Yes, that's very good. So Sarah, come on up. Sarah is not a stranger to this environment. I think this is the fourth straight year that you've actually been here for winning the state championship, so, especially in the 50 Free, so congratulations. We also have with us tonight some track and field state champions from Ludlow. Maya Mikarski, come on up. Maya plays first in the 55-meter in the Indoor Track Double-L State Championship Meet. And Tess Stapleton. Tess placed first in the long jump at the Indoor Track Double-L State Championship Meet. She also placed first in the 55-meter hurdles at the State Open. So congratulations. Sorry, Mr. Trebling, I think we have one more. In fencing, we have tonight Madison Lee joining us, who is the Women's Foil Champion for the state of Connecticut. So Madison, please come on up. Coach Roberts, are you here as well? Didn't see him out there, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Hesse. From Ward, we're going to introduce our wrestling coach, Coach Shaughnessy, and he'll introduce the gentlemen this evening that are being honored. Gentlemen, we did allow the girls to go first, but I have to say, your short look gave us pause to think maybe we should bring you up here with those legs first. So why don't you come up and let everybody have a look while Coach Shaughnessy gives you your award. Thank you.
First, I want to apologize for not being a little more dressed up, but I went, I went right to the soccer fields after school, so coaching my kids in the offseason. Ward Wrestling had a great season this year, we were 18-1, ranked number two overall in the state, and these guys were all All-State. Chris Janai, he was a Double-L State Champion. His brother next to him, Joe, was Double-L State Champion, State Open Champion, and fifth in New England's. And lastly, Izaki Zuckerman was also a Double-L Champion, State Open Champion, and fifth in New England's. They had an exemplary season.
Thank you.
Did you get your picture? Did you get your picture?
One more.
Again, for all awardees and people who have represented the Fairfield District very well at states and nationals, thank you. Okay, so now we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is our, equally, we enjoy hearing from students about their experience here in our school district, and keeping us up to date on what's happening at our two high schools. So, going from the, all the way over, Mr. Rivera, do you want to bring us up to date on Fairfield Ward?
All right. All right, so unfortunately, our superstar, Mr. Orbin, will not be attending tonight, because he needs to represent Ward at a lacrosse game, but he figured I could probably handle things, so without further ado, to start off, we had visitors from Wilton High School. The principal, other administrators, teachers, and parents came to observe the block schedule, who met with administrators, teachers, and students, and observed classes. And I have to say, us students, we like it, because typically we get to have two days for homework now. And next off, we have the Red Cross Blood Drive on Monday, the April 30th. We collected 46 pints of blood, potentially saving 138 lives on a, the blood drive. This blood drive was scheduled, then rescheduled, and then, as you may have guessed, rescheduled for a third time, so it's pretty impressive that we got that many people to attend on our third scheduling. Pre-prom Senior Assembly with Stephen Hill about Speak Sobriety took place about his personal experience, and juniors will have their pre-prom assembly Monday, May 14th, with the Mock Crash. And we have a a cappella performance featuring Ward's Muse and Overtones and Treble Makers on Monday, May 21st, at 7:00 PM at the Downtown Cabaret Theater. And tickets will be selling for $12 at the door. There were three tremendous performances of Into the Woods this past weekend, two great crowds on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, so bravo to the cast crew and Mr. Fattaroli. The Ward Ludlow Boys and Girls Tennis Game is, was today, so hoping we get some good news soon. And on Friday, we have the Ward versus Ludlow Softball Game, and on Saturday, at Fairfield University, at 12:00 noon, we'll have the Ward versus Ludlow Baseball Match. This past weekend, the CIAC cast honored the senior scholar athletes, Gabriel Anchoka for golf and fencing, and Luke Bender for wrestling. And are the students at Ward are excited for the end of the year that can't really seem to come close, soon enough, as juniors and seniors are in the midst of our AP exams.
Any questions for our representative from Fairfield Ward? Thank you very much, Fairfield Ludlow.
Okay, so last week Ludlow had our Mock Crash, which was organized by one of our school counselors, Mr. Tim Morris, and they brought in three trauma nurses from a hospital who did all of the makeup for the students who were participating in the crash, and talked them through what their experience would be like, and kind of how they had to act for their role. And then following the crash, the students, the juniors, they watched, they watched the crash, and then they listened to a speaker that came from the Moms Against Drunk Driving Organization. After that, the Spring Musical Pippin was a huge hit last weekend. Everyone loved working on the show and had a great experience with it, and it was pretty well-received by the public as well. On Friday morning, there was a forum for students regarding the new grading policy and the midterms, and from what I gather, people seemed to be pretty interested in the prospect of no midterms and a more flexible grading schedule. In sports, the boys' lacrosse team had a big FCAC win against Staples. The boys' baseball team defeated West Hill and then qualified for the state tournament, and the girls have been continuing their strong lacrosse season and have a 9-4 record as of now.
Also, last week or the week before, we had Battle of the Houses, which is when the three houses that make up the school compete in fun games against each other. This year Warner won for the third time in a row. We also had a Military Day in the College and Career Center, when military people came in to talk about military careers to our students. Similarly to the Mock Crash for seniors last week, we had Grim Reaper Day, which is when the Grim Reaper comes into classes and kind of like kills seniors in the classes to equal the amount of people who have died, teens who have died in Connecticut from drunk driving. And then to follow that, we had Stephen Hill come in and, from Speak Sobriety, and it was a really moving assembly. We also have AP exams this week and next week, and this weekend, and next weekend, we have junior, senior and junior prom.
Thank you. Any questions for our representatives from Fairfield Ludlow High School? Thank you very much. We have a presentation tonight on the music curriculum, so you're up for a second time. Do you have anything you want to comment on before the director makes hers?
I'm just gonna say thank you before she even starts, because there's a tremendous amount of work that has gone into this the entire year, and so thank you to you and all of your staff for the work that you've done.
There's a PowerPoint presentation, so we should move on.
Good evening, Mike Cummings from the Chief Academic Officer. We're going to present tonight, Sarah, Sarah Hoffa is going to present the music curriculum. She'll speak tonight to the many folks who assisted with her in this. Because the music curriculum is not only K-12, but essentially involves four major content areas, as Sarah will speak to tonight, we've divided the curriculum review into two sections. So tonight, you'll hear about the K-5 curriculum, and Sarah's gonna do such a great job that we're gonna bring her back for an encore next year, and she'll do grade six through 12. So Sarah.
Thank you. Before I start the presentation, I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge and thank several of the music teachers who were part of the curriculum writing team that are here tonight. So we have Cindy Ecker and Carrie Trambly, who wrote the strings curriculum. We have Donna Schmardell, who is my just go-to consultant for everything, she really helped out, especially with the instrumental curriculum. I have Laura Haskett, Sharon Cardillo, and Sheila Doherty, who worked on the Vocal General Curriculum. And Martha Allward is here also to help support. So thank you guys for being here and for all of your work. So, this is just a fundamental quote from NAFMI, our National Association for Music Education, discussing why, why we should study music, why is it important? And the underlying skills are really all-important life skills that we want our children to have. We want them to be able to collaborate, communicate, be creative, self-expressive, and be leaders. Studying music teaches 21st-century skills, which again are all-important life skills that we want our kids to have. Leadership, responsibility, collaboration, teamwork, critical thinking, all of these are just characteristics and traits that we look for in students and people, and those heading to the workforce. So these are key components, key life skills that are integrated into music curriculum. In December of 2015, ESSA, the Every Student Succeeds Act, replaced No Child Left Behind, thank God, and it really was a huge, huge step for music and the arts, because we were recognized as part of an integral component to a well-rounded education. So music and the arts, that was a huge step for us. Fairfield's philosophy in music education, this is posted, I sent the link to everybody, but just give you a moment to just read sort of the driving statement behind what we've done. We're really aiming to create artistically literate and culturally aware citizens. And Plato's quote is just right on, except for the physics part, but don't tell the science people, sorry. But no, music is, is just important, it really is. So tonight, I'm going to present to you kindergarten through 5th grade general music documents, our 5th grade choir curriculum document, 4th grade strings, 5th grade strings, and 5th grade band. Here are just some snapshots of many, many students involved in the program. They're doing the orf instruments on the bottom, those are in the Vocal General Room, strings, band, all different instrument groups you can see. So why should we revise? Our, our last revision of the elementary curriculum was in 2011. We last revised the curriculum in chunks, so it was elementary, middle, and high school all done separately. The current curriculum documents in Play Now are aligned with the national music standards from 1994, and we've updated since then. So in 2014, we had the new core art standards, they were developed at the national level, and then Connecticut actually adopted them in November of 2016. And then Connecticut actually adopted them in November of 2016 as written. So we've taken that document. And this is a great opportunity for us to vertically align K-12. So we're all revising and reviewing what we're doing, and we can use common language and really weave things together that way. So it's a good opportunity. This is just the process that we went through. Because we had really new standards in 2014 that were just in play at the national level, we took some time to really have professional development for the staff. These, and I'll get into the differences in the standards, but these are a totally new way of thinking about music education and arts education. So it was important to take time to give staff presentations by grade level and by strand, to really understand how these are put together and all the different components. And we took time also to look at curriculum and consult with other districts to see what they're doing, as some of them have already aligned with new standards. And then we were revising our content as well. I also reached out to our State Arts Consultant, and she worked with me and gave some feedback in developing the format and just making sure we were on the right track to aligning our standards with our curriculum. Then the teachers, God bless them, spent every PD day, meeting session, tons of release time, working on this. We could just sit and like analyze sentences at a time in these sessions. It was really, we were really getting into everything, really, at a deep level. So it took a lot of time in those sessions. Then we went for feedback from staff. Once the curriculum writing team put things together, we sent it out to staff, got their feedback, administration, parent focus group, and the Connecticut Arts Administrators Association members, I sent it to some of them for some feedback. And then we revised based on all of that for the documents that you see today. So it was a lengthy process, but time well spent. All right, so I'm going to just give you a little background on the New Core Arts Standards. And these are basically the organizing framework for the five arts disciplines. We're linking music, theater, media arts, dance, and visual arts in these standards. They shift the music standards from an emphasis on skills and knowledge, it's a skill-based focus, to more of an overall conceptual understanding of music and the arts. They're organized by artistic process, process components, essential questions, and enduring This is just a comparison chart for you to see. On the left, we have the 1994 standards, which were just nine content standards. And you could see the depth that the 2014 standards have gone into. Some of the noteworthy things are that, you know, at the upper levels, we're able to separate out by strand. We have ensemble standards and different levels of proficiency, whereas in the original standards, there were only two. So they're much deeper. These are the nine from 1994, just straightforward, skill-based. And then, I'm going to show you a little bit about how they're organized and what they look like. So the overarching structure of these are the creating, performing, responding, and connecting, all of these artistic processes. Connecting was sort of what music folks developing the standards saw was already embedded in all that we do. But in order to align with all of the five arts, we've added connecting as a formal artistic process. So you'll see, I'll explain how that fits in with the structure of the document. You have anchor standards and performance standards. And the anchor standards, there are eleven of them in total. They're shared across all of those disciplines, and they provide the cross-curricular linkages. They describe the actions required for the artistic processes, and they help teachers and students understand what's required for each artistic process. These are the bigger statements. Then the performance standards are what translate anchor standards into the measurable goals to articulate student achievement. Then we have enduring understandings and essential questions. So the enduring understandings are the summarizing statements, they're the big-ticket ideas. And the essential questions are the open-ended, thought-provoking questions that should be revisited over time. So this is what, you remember that list of nine standards that I showed you before? That's what we were working with, and this is what we've gone. This is just one small piece of the creating artistic process that we're looking at now with these standards. So all of these components are just highlighted for you to see where to locate everything. They're pretty complex, they're really complex. So what are the major changes? What did we do here? A lot of our content, the same ideas, fundamentals have remained the same, but it's the way they're organized and the approaches that we're taking that have changed a little bit. Content topics were reorganized to align with the new standards and emphasize the four artistic processes. The content topics are really how we break down the major components to music in the classroom, like rhythm, harmony, melody, all of that stuff. Assessments are actually included in the document, so they're easily accessible, and they can assist teachers in backwards design approach to planning. So one of the goals was to make this really accessible to a new teacher, so they would be able to look at the document and know pretty easily how to follow it and to plan lessons. So this is what the cover page of each document is going to look like. And I just kind of highlighted the different parts that you'll see. It's kind of the same format for every cover page, so you can find the overarching course goals, overarching skill objectives, and all the artistic processes and standards that are from the new standards on each cover page. So I'll first walk you through the general music documents. Okay, and I wanted to show you a video. This is from Stratfield School. This is like all that we do in a nutshell. These kids are performing, they're playing, there's instrumental development, there's vocal development being practiced, there are rhythm skills, melody, rhythmic ostinatos happening, so much is happening just in this one video. And I wanted you to just see like a snapshot into the class. Okay, so I just wanted to give you just a brief overview. That's so much going on in that right there, all embedded in our curriculum here. So when you look at the content topics, this is like one piece of what we're doing. And music isn't taught one unit at a time, like we don't teach rhythm in September and melody in October. It's all, it's taught really, I think of it as like horizontally. So we're teaching all of these things all year. And what we've done is outlined the artistic processes that are used in each content topic, and we're talking about, we list the enduring understandings, the essential questions, and these process components, which are really the verbs that we're using of what the kids are doing. And then underneath that, we have the instructional strategies and processes listed for how teachers are actually achieving these objectives. So it's giving them direction and what the kids should be doing. And then over at the top of the page are the skill objectives. These are the overarching things that kids should be working on with regard to rhythm throughout the year. And then, at the end of that, we list the assessments. And you'll see the assessment pack at the end, but we list how everything is being assessed right on the document. So you'll find at the end of each grade level, there's an assessment pack, so that teachers are given common assessments, absolutely adding their own assessments too, but at least we know that all the third graders will be taking the same rhythm assessment, you know, at one point, so that we're all on the same page and really unified. This is an example of a performing assessment. We have the rubric there, and it lines up with their report cards as well. So the task summary is written out, and the instructions and the grading expectations are there. So that would be a sample of a performing assessment in the pack. And then this is a sample of a written assessment in the pack. So it's telling teachers which content topic it's addressing, and it's a measurable for their achievement, so. Some students at work on these. And then the last piece, connecting, we sort of added at the end. And after going back and forth on this so many times, we thought that the best way to highlight connecting was to create sort of assured experiences, where all students in each grade are going to sing a certain song and connect it to things studied in the grade level. So in this grade, we're talking about This Pretty Planet. So kids are studying the music for the lyrics, the melody, the rhythm, but they're also connecting to other disciplines and doing that through focus questions. That's Vocal General, and I'm going to switch gears to the Performing Ensemble Documents. These are organized a little bit differently. So some of the notes on this are, well, the fifth-grade choir experience has been embedded in fifth-grade general music. We have a separate curriculum document written out for this course. It hasn't had its own curriculum before, but we felt that it was important to write that. The ensemble documents are organized by artistic process as opposed to content topics. Connecting is also addressed in the general music classes, so you won't find it in the elementary instrumental ensembles, because it's already addressed, and they're all in those general classes. Specific tasks, repertoire, and assessments noted for ensemble and small group lessons. So you'll see in each section, there are objectives for the ensemble rehearsals and objectives for the small group lessons. The instrumental lessons focus on techniques like scales and fingerings, things specific to each instrument, whereas the ensemble rehearsals are focusing on bringing everyone together. They're playing repertoire. So they don't have that one-on-one time to fix fingerings, embouchures, things like that. These documents contain specific instrumental and vocal skill level criteria unique to Fairfield Public Schools. We've created our own skill levels. So we've listed them out, and they're vertically, they're going to climb all the way through 12th grade by the time we're finished. For band and orchestra, all assessments and instrumental skill levels are attached to the documents. And for choir, it's a little bit different, because we don't have a small group lesson component in there. But the skill levels are included in the document, and assessments are embedded in the fifth-grade general curriculum, because choir just meets once a week, well, once a six-day rotation. I hope all that makes sense, I'm just talking so fast. So just to show you, on the cover page of each ensemble document, I thought it made sense to lay out the progression for each ensemble type. So in choir, you'll see the grade or course, so when a student takes choir, they can go all the way through. And then, the skill level that it lines up with. And then, we called this an ensemble sequence marker. This aligns with the new standards in talking about students' proficiency levels, whether they're novice, intermediate, accomplished, et cetera. So you're going to see that on the cover pages of each ensemble document. And then, I had mentioned it before, but just so you can clearly see, there are ensemble goals and small group lesson goals, and they're different. So these are organized by the artistic processes, as I was saying. So this is just the sample page, the underperforming, this is what students are going to do. You'll find the enduring understandings, essential questions, all of the verbiage of how they're achieving these, right at the top of the page. And then, you'll see the repertoire they'll be playing, and then the tasks that they'll be completing in an ensemble. This just is page one, but you'll see, there's an ensemble in the small group lesson. And then the assessments laid out. This just sums it up for me. Quality general music instruction, lesson instruction, and ensemble rehearsal instruction at the elementary level set the foundation for lifelong learning of an appreciation for music. We don't get things like Candlelight and Carol Anne without fundamentals being taught right from the very, very beginning. So I wanted to leave you with this video, and forgive the technology glitch here that we'll have for a second. But for those of you who are able to see the Townwide Orchestra Festival, there is something so incredibly powerful about watching 531 kids play. So there's just something really amazing about that, watching everything come together. And the last slide I leave you with is just, I know I've emailed it out, but we were recognized by the National Association of Music Merchants, and we're in the top 4% of the country for outstanding commitment to music education. And I thank you guys all for being a part of that, and the parents of this town, administration, because without your support, we wouldn't be able to do things like this, and we wouldn't be in the top 4%. So thank you very much for listening to all my talking. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask or reach out if there are any I can answer for you.
Do we want to take questions while you're there, or?
Sure.
I'm really asking our TV producer. It doesn't matter. So questions from the board on the, Mrs. Gerber?
First, thank you so much for the presentation, and thank you to the teachers. It pains me deeply that my children, when they got to high school, stopped participating in the music program, but they had such an incredible experience in elementary school thanks to Mrs. Haskett. And so, it's just, you know, I love coming to the concerts, even though my children don't play in them, and you just have done such a fantastic job. I just had one question, because I know that the teachers obviously were all working together in putting this curriculum together. On the elementary level, how much, how often do the teachers at the different schools work together, collaborate, compare notes? Is that, you know, kind of on a regular basis, as needed, at different times of the year? I was just kind of curious, especially now with the new curriculum, is there kind of a plan to do more, do the same? I just was curious.
Yeah, actually, we have one K-12 meeting a month, where we have some general business, and then we do work by level, so the teachers have a really good chance to collaborate, discuss ideas, and talk about things then. And then there's another meeting once a month, where they have time as a department to talk and compare notes and, you know, give feedback to each other, share ideas. And then we have some of these early-release professional development days, where we've been able to, teachers have designed some of their own sharing been able to, teachers have designed some of their own sharing sessions, if they want to look at choral repertoire at one time, if they want to look at curriculum, different things, now that we have the new curriculum going forward. That'll definitely be part of the sharing sessions.
And I guess just one other question, and if you don't know the answer, it's totally fine. It's kind of a loaded question. Is there kind of one or two really big changes or improvements that you feel this new curriculum brings to the music at the K through five, PK through five level?
I think it tightens everything up. It really organizes in a better structure, I think, just fine-tuning some of the content topics, bringing them together. And I really think that having all of the assessments in one place where everybody can access them very easily is a really big plus for the way this is laid out. So I guess more organizationally, I see pluses here.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Mr. Peterson? I'll just make a few comments. Say thank you very much to Ms. Hofer. It's been an integral part of my kids' music education, as has Dr. Alward over there. It's one of the few kind of places that I've been to. Dr. Alward hasn't been playing the piano. I just, it's such a phenomenal program, and I have unbounded faith in the program. Just, I felt like I had an opportunity to say that, and so I'm saying that.
Thank you. There are actually, just so you know, so many products of Fairfield's music department back teaching. I'm one of them. Several of the elementary teachers are as well, so it's really, Carrie Tremblay actually is. Brian Borelli teaches band. There are a number of us that graduated and came back because we believe in it.
Mrs. Max and Cannelly?
A few questions. I'm actually going to go back to the question I asked in 2011, and I don't know if you'd be able to speak to it or if you need to call on any staff, but we, an important part of our facilities work had been ensuring an equitable experience across all of our schools. And of course, our elementary schools do not have the same access to space and to conduct all that. And I was wondering if you could speak to the status right now of how you're able to achieve all aspects of the curriculum, from the choir to band to strings to the general music curriculum, with the different level, with the facility deficiencies that we still have in place?
I would say we have a very flexible staff. People make it work if they're teaching on the stage, if they're teaching lessons, you know, in a classroom, if they're moving, you know, wherever they have to go, staff have been flexible and are able to deliver the curriculum to the best of their abilities. We've utilized instruments like a guitar instead of a piano to still work on vocal development and things when kids, music has to be taught in a classroom instead of in its own space. In terms of performance arenas, stages, you know, they do vary. They're all very different. And every school is unique, and I think we're able to perform really quite well in each space. Every space has its challenges, but I think, would you guys speak to that anymore?
You should unfortunately come forward so we can get your name and face for national TV.
National TV. National TV, okay. I'm Laura Haskett. I'm the general music K-5 and chorus at Osborne Hill. And so I just wanted to kind of piggyback off of that, because we do have, given our FTEs at all of the schools, a lot of the schools have extra staff that picks up classes. And some of the things that we've been really trying to do is to figure out how to best utilize our spaces. So I can speak to my school, I know that. We try to schedule the extra staff around prep periods, so I will have my prep periods when the other staff is coming in so that they can have full access to the music room and all of the things that are necessary to meet the needs of the curriculum. And I think with going forward, that's going to be something that we can push for and hopefully be able to have everyone able to access all of the wonderful things that we have available to make our curriculum really shine through. So I know that we're working on that, and I know we're going to have more small bits of staff coming through too, so that's something that I'm personally going to be working on, but that's all I wanted to add, so. National TV, thank you. Yeah. It's good.
Anything for them, Mrs. Max and Cannelly? Please do.
A few, thank you. I was wondering if you could speak more to the connecting nature of, as one of the new standards, as one of the performance, because that whole aspect of interdisciplinary is what I think is so valuable about music. And again, I did not look at the old curriculum documents to refresh my memory on this, but I know that at certain points, as I recall, aspects of what was in for the music skills or the music content area, there was connection not only among the arts, but also connections, for example, to the social studies curriculum. And I don't know if that's something you can speak to off the cuff, but is that something that's still present? Because I didn't, the only time I saw specifics up there, it was with a wide range. It said folk music, and I couldn't read the rest of the list, but...
It's very small.
Yeah. But can you speak to that presence still being there or not?
It is, and it's based on repertoire that's chosen. Of course, we go into depth in discussing the history of it. We can talk about composer history, we can talk about poetry, we connect it to language arts. If there is science, like in This Pretty Planet, we've connected, you know, we'll work in the classrooms to connect to science where we can. I didn't want to design a curriculum where we were really just basing it off of other curriculums and trying to tie it to music. It was really important to me that it was still music-centered and we were connecting it to other disciplines. So there is so much to do with all the repertoire that's chosen for concerts, which is, you know, and then the folk songs studied, that vary by teacher. So we haven't prescribed which folk songs teachers can use to teach some of these concepts, but it's kind of up to the teacher there. We did design the connecting piece of the Vocal General to be an assured experience, so the songs definitely connect to different disciplines, you know, like Follow the Drinking Gourd is tied into history and the idea of slavery and all of that. So we made connections by having the assured experience as a formal one, but there are going to be connections made just based on the repertoire that teachers do use on a day-to-day basis with the kids.
Okay, thank you. And I was wondering if you could speak more to the K-12 vertical alignment in terms of how did this work impact what we're going to be seeing next year?
So one of the biggest parts of this is just tying all of the organization together. So every ensemble is going to be organized by the artistic processes, and you're going to be able to see growth really clearly in the skill levels for choral as well. You'll be able to see what a kid will start doing in fifth grade or fourth grade and how they will progress. You'll be able to see that through the skill levels and in the tasks, the repertoire studied as we go through in that Ensemble Sequence Marker. Hopefully that...
Okay. Yeah, and actually, that was something I wanted to just commend you. I really enjoyed seeing that aspect of the performance assessment and that rubric that was part of it, you know, in terms of the clear expectation and that, you know, as kids, if they were to move about, that they would have those common experiences. I thought that was really very compelling to see. And then, I guess I'll just go to my last question. Is there any budgetary impact to any part of these changes?
Ah, the dreaded question, right? I will tell you, no. There is no added staffing required, nothing like that. What we will want to look into at some point is those ORF instruments that you saw in the video. I asked around to the teachers, because they predate me, and some of them, one teacher said, "I've been here 33 years and I've never seen new ones." So it's something that down the road, it's not an immediate need, but it's something we want to look at getting on a replacement cycle to replace a classroom set, because those are integral parts of instrumental development. So, nothing significant right away, but it's something that down the road, we want to look at forming a cycle.
Thank you.
Are you saying there's a teacher on our staff who remembers using that same thing when they were in elementary school?
Probably Mr. Borelli might remember that, I don't know. I'll ask him.
Other questions from Board members? Mrs. Jacobson?
Not so much a question, just a comment. Thank you, and thank you to everyone. I went to a middle school concert last night, and it's just amazing to see the progression and the growth from elementary through middle, and I really appreciated in your video, starting in the elementary video and then culminating in the high school students and just where they come from and where they get to. And I just, I'm completely not musical person, so I just come away, no matter if it's third grade, fourth grade, 12th grade, it amazes me, the talent, and I know that's partly, very much so due to you guys, so just great work. And I just wanted to follow up with Jim Max and Cannelly's question on, will you be coming forth or making a recommendation on that replacement cycle? And when would we might want to start thinking about that?
I did, I have asked around to get some quotes on pricing it out, and basically, I recommend that we use the instruments we have until there starts to become a real need, and then we start to look at forming the cycle, much like we're starting to do with the elementary keyboards for the vocal classroom. We've already started that process, so a couple of years down the road, I envision starting to do it. But I recommend doing it like a set at a time and not just pieces of a set at a time, like take one school at a time, if that makes sense.
Okay, thank you so much.
Mrs. Vitale?
I also want to say thank you. All my children have just benefited so greatly and loved the program. So much so, my middle daughter now is applying to school for musical theater next year, so we will see how that goes. So thank you, and to my son's elementary school teacher and for the patience. I see my daughter's orchestra teachers, and I too am sad that they stopped playing the violin, seeing just enough. But I really just wanted to know if there was any, you're seeing any sort of decrease in enrollment as kids move into secondary school, from elementary school, from middle school to high school, or has it been pretty consistent in terms of kids sticking with bands, sticking with orchestra? Has the block schedule changed anything? I know there was some scheduling issues with that.
I just actually looked at all of our data, and while we have to remember that music is a requirement K-5 and then also 6-8, we have a pretty good retention. We're doing very well and continue to focus on getting kids to continue from eight to nine, bridging that gap. We have, I could email you the statistics of specifics, because I don't remember the numbers off of my head, but we have several, like over 1,000 kids performing in the band, orchestra, and choir, over 2,000 in the choir, all the way through the K-12 program. So they are sticking with it, and block scheduling did present a slight challenge, but scheduling at the high school, they've been so flexible in helping us make things work that we're able to avoid a lot of conflicts, so we really appreciate that, David and Greg. Thank you. But, you know, so kids aren't losing out because of that.
Any other questions? I'll just, I'll make this comment. When you go to a musical performance, and you're lucky enough to be at the last performance where they recognize the seniors, and you go down the line and they ask each senior, "What did this mean to you?" I wish every board member, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and RTM member could be in the audience and listen, yes, the skill set, but what they talk about is the relationship they had to our teaching staff and to one another, and how that prepared them for their lifelong learning. And so that speaks to what the, sorry, true purpose of teachers are, which is to reach out to a student, develop a relationship with them, cause them to know that they are better than they think they are, and teach them a skill along the way, and your staff and our whole staff do that very well.
Thank you.
Final comments? No, thank you very much. This will be on the agenda for approval at the next meeting, next regular meeting. If you have questions in the meantime, feel free to get them to Dr. Jones. We're now at the part of our agenda for public comment on agenda items. Is there any member of the public that wishes to come forward and present to the Board of Education? I see people are heading in the other direction, so I take that, that means no. So we'll move directly on. New business? No, old business. Approval of the pre-K science curriculum recommended motion?
K-12.
PK-12, yeah. That the Board of Education approve the pre-K-12 science curriculum. Do I have a motion? Mr. Acer, do I have a second? Ms. Pitco? As our science teacher, you should. The motion's before us. Do we have any further questions on the science curriculum that board members wish to ask or comments that they wish to make? Mrs. Max and Cannelly?
Thank you. I had two questions. My first was regarding, I'd meant to ask this last time and forgot. What do you see as the timeline regarding the NCAA clearinghouse? Because obviously, with all of that renaming, changing of length of time, that really could have some, you know, consequences for a number of students, or at least a number of dreaming students. So what do you anticipate the timeline would be on that?
We've already been working on that in anticipation of your approval, which we hope to get tonight. So we've already sent all the information to the NCAA. They, to my knowledge, have approved all but one course, which they asked a clarifying question about, and we sent them information, so we're awaiting their response. Since all our current courses are already approved, we don't have anything to worry about, like if, I'm not suggesting this by any way, but by any means, but, you know, if for some reason we had to delay this for some reason, we're not in any danger by moving ahead already, so we're well on our way to getting that resolved.
Thank you.
And for the purpose of our national TV audience, just say who you are and what position you have.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Patrice Vigella. I'm the Director of 612 Science and K-12 STEAM.
And then my second question, I know this is something that had been talked about and obviously is not present in the curriculum documents, or at least it wasn't on the Program of Studies, and that was the whole idea of an independent research component to this. I was wondering if you could speak to why it ended up not being added, and how do you see working with students who have that independent bent and interest and skill level that they could do something like that?
Well, that's a two-part question, so I'll take it in two parts. One was, in moving forward, we had to work within the FT that we currently have. And believe it or not, the courses are extremely well-subscribed, better than I had even hoped. And so we haven't abandoned the independent research, we just felt that we wanted to roll out the courses first and then perhaps come back to you for approval for that. In the interim, we do have a number of teachers at the high school who work with students on independent study projects. They propose something, they, you know, approach a teacher, we have a whole process for that. And we have quite a few who either work with a teacher or have participated in like the Yale Discovery Program, for example, in the summertime. There's a large number of kids over the years that I've been here who've participated in those. So if a student has a particular interest, usually they'll talk to their teacher about it first, and then the teacher can guide them from there. So for example, if they're taking a chemistry class and they have a particular interest in a physics topic, the chemistry teacher probably isn't the best person to work with them. So they'll connect them with a physics person who will then, you know, work with them to go, usually their idea is this big, and our job is to kind of make it this big, and then they'll move forward from there. But that's how we're going to handle it for now. We're going to roll out the new courses and then come back to you with the independent research.
Excellent. And do you find that we have the equipment that the students need for the type of independent work that they're looking to do?
For the most part, we do. There are situations where we connect them with university professors. Because, you know, they, we just, you know, we don't have, I'm going to exaggerate here, but a scanning tunneling electron microscope, unless you're planning to provide us with one anytime soon. But, so there are some things that they do need university access for, and since we have Fairfield University, Sacred Heart University, you know, so nearby, some even Yale University, we've had very good luck in connecting them with university professors who can provide that access.
Excellent. Thank you.
Other questions from board members? Seeing none, out to the public? Any member of the public?
I think the public are all our colleagues back there, right?
Yes, I know. But I'm obligated to do this. Any member of the public that wishes to step forward and address the board on this voting item, please do so. Seeing none, back to the board. We're ready for a vote, that the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the pre-K-12 science curriculum. All in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your support. We really, really do appreciate it. We're very excited about this.
New business, Quarterly Report, third quarter, Ms. Muncell. Enclosures one, two, and three are sent to you.
We actually do have two additional documents in here tonight for you. First of all, Ms. Muncell's going to walk through what you have seen before as far as the quarterly. We have added more colors and tried to color code for you, because this year was a unique year. Behind that, we are providing tonight an update on the Operations Department and what are those items that were frozen. and what are those items that were frozen that have been unfrozen. Just to reiterate that we did unfreeze and are working through every project that we can. Behind that, we're also providing an update on special education as far as where we are this time in the year because we've told you all year long that we've had an overage there. We wanted the board to better understand that category of the budget. Ms. Munzel?
Ms. Munzel.
Dori Munzel, Executive Director of Finance and Business Services. The document I'm going to concentrate on is this one that's called Budget Projection Summary. It's one of the very colorful pages. They're all kind of colorful this time. As Dr. Jones said, this has been such a unique year. I, you know, we just racked our brains trying to figure out, okay, how can we best break this down to show everybody, you know, what's exactly going on here this year? I'm going to concentrate, there's so much here. I would ask that if we could, let me explain the entire document and then we can go back to questions after because it may help if I get all the way to the end. So, I'm going to concentrate on the first section to the, on the left, which is column one in the account descriptions. The portion on top with the green are the accounts that are under budget. And there's no surprises here. This has been, you know, this is consistent with what's been going on all year. Very little lot change. We highlighted the health insurance with the $1 million that we know from the CBAC savings. If you go down a little bit further, line 15 is the balance of the funds held in reserve. We had 2.379 to begin with. We restored the $916,000 to the maintenance department because there was discussion that, you know, it's such a lengthy process to get maintenance projects and repairs going that that should be restored as soon as possible. So, we were able to restore that, leaving the 1.462 in reserve for our total funds available on line 16 of the 3.2 million. So, going down further in that column, these are the accounts that are over budget. The pension, we knew that was going to be over budget. We set aside money in the reserve for that. Special ed, the next three accounts are all special ed. That will total the 1.465 that special ed is over, which ties to one of the other documents, the other additional enclosures. Legal fees, to be on the safe side, we're projecting a slight overage there. That's a difference. Special ed, we broke, transportation, we broke out between regular and special ed. Electricity, we're a little over. And then for line 27, a total projected overage of $1.9 million. So, putting the two together, on line 28, a gross projected balance of $1.3 million. Now, in that reserve, there's several pieces, there's several reasons why there is that large of a balance. One is still funds that are in there that were on reserve. We talked about restoring technology funds when we could so that technology could utilize them before the end of the year. That's $235,000. That's on line 31. Line 32 is the $403,000 that the board had voted on to pre-purchase from the, for the 1819 budget, from the insurance savings. That left us for insurance a balance of around $600,000 to potentially return to the town, bringing us down to a net projected balance on line 35 of $98,000 and change. Now, moving over to the right side, columns two, three, and four are a breakdown of column one. It just gives more detail. So, if you go to lines 16, of that 30, that $3.2 million that, of funds that are available, we broke it down to, you know, what buckets of money make up that 3.2 million? So, of all other accounts in the, you know, in our chart of accounts, it's $806,000. Then, column three is the million dollars in insurance savings. And column four is the 1.4 million balance that's left from the reserve money. So, those three numbers totaled together is where the 3.2 million comes from. Moving down to line 27, the 1.9 million over budget is all in all other accounts. It's not part of the reserve and it's not part of the insurance savings. So, then the gross balance that's remaining, it's a negative 1.13 in all other accounts, the million dollars in insurance, and the 1.4 remaining from reserves. And then the lines below that, in all three columns, show, well, let's start. Column four, line 29, is the 2.39, 3.79 reserve that we had in total. We reserved, we restored the 916 to maintenance. There's $235,000 in there that could be restored to technology. Then, a 1.2 million would cover the overages, leaving us nothing left in reserve. Moving to the left, and the insurance on line 28, the million dollars, backing out the pre-purchase of 403, and the remaining balance of the $600,000 leaves us a small residual balance. And then, column two of the 1.1 million overage would be covered by the 1.2 from the balance in the reserve, which gives us a net projected balance of the $94,000. Those two add to the 98. So, that's, you know, that's how those numbers came about. That gives us a little bit of a cushion, so to speak, if there's, you know, any wiggle room. But that accounts for all the different buckets of money and things that we, you know, we can, we have to do with it and that we can do with it.
So, before we move on to the other documents, any questions from board members on this document? Ms. Leeper, followed by Mr. Acer.
Two questions. I guess the first question under the electricity overage. We, the district recently put up a lot of solar panels. So, have we realized savings from those solar panels? Or was it that we projected to have more savings than what was realized? I know there was some mechanical issues with some of them.
I presume you'll be turning to a lifeline and have Mr. Cullen come forward.
I give up trying to explain utilities. I know that the rates themselves are budgeted based on the purchasing director's recommendations, but the delivery charges are variable and, you know, that's always, that's not that bad for, you know, I don't know, over $2 million budget for electricity.
Yes. For the record, Tom Cullen, Executive Director of Operations. One of the things we did share with the board, and I can do it again, is a chart of where we put solar systems in. And the important thing is when they went live. So, everyone believes we have all these solar systems in. How come we're not saving tons of money when really the high school carports just went live? So, we haven't even experienced a full year yet. We're also seeing that the projected savings the contractor gave us are not true to that number. So, if they're showing savings of $28,000 for one of the high schools, we're actually seeing 24, 22.7 for the first year. So, we are watching it. We have a matrix. We're following it. The important thing is when they go live, so we can see year to year and just monitor it. So, there is a savings, but when you take the savings that's projected and then you take the electricity increase, rates increase, you know, they base their savings on a smaller wattage and charge that we're getting, and that's been changing. It changes every year and whatever UI wants to. Versus when the systems went live, the uses of the buildings. I explained that, you know, we're adding a lot of things to our electric bill. We're adding a lot of square footage to the schools. We're adding mechanical means of fresh air and air conditioning, which eats up a lot of it. So, it's all weighed out.
Okay.
Other questions?
I guess then my other question is more just sort of holistically about what percent of the reserve money is going towards what it was originally allocated for rather than where we had overages?
If, I might take that one because we've got a whole chart on that.
Sure.
And it's actually, if you look at that next page, one of the reasons we included that was trying to help you a little bit with that question. So, the top portion is showing you what that 916 is going for. And there's even another page behind these that's a little bit more detailed on the projects. Below that, you're seeing what was considered on reserve that we didn't do. So...
So, before we get into that detail, questions on this document?
Sorry about that. Thank you.
Mr. Acer.
Oh, Mr. Cullen ran. I apologize, but Ms. Munzel, you mentioned, the electricity did jump out to me as well. And you mentioned, I don't have the number, but do you know what the number we had budgeted for electricity? You said it was about $2 million?
I thought so.
Because around $2 million, this is a seven and a half percent variance. So, to me, that's statistically significant. So, you know, I just, you know, I understand we're adding square footage and everything like that, but...
A lot. You know, we had 20,000 square feet, 15,000 to Riverfield. We added Osborne Hill mechanical AC system that was never there.
But these are all things that we had planned for a long...
Yes, but we don't know how to plan for the cost.
Okay.
I couldn't tell you how much an air conditioning unit, a 15-ton unit, is going to cost us annually. It's based on use.
So, I guess with Holland Hills starting to break ground now and everything, I just, I would just say I would hope that we can maybe learn from some of these recent additions moving forward so we can try and rein that number in a little bit, you know, if possible. Another question not related to facilities, with regards to legal, and this may be for the superintendent. Can you just give a brief estimate on what our overages for legal were, let's say, the last year or two?
We were struggling to stay within the million-dollar range or over a million. Our budget is around, I think it was 600 this year, Ms. Munzel, I believe it's 600. The largest, one of the greatest expenses we've had in the last couple of years was our special education legal. And we were averaging about $30,000, $30,000 to $35,000 a month. That's probably the item we've watched the closest this year, having in-house counsel with Ms. Deasy and just making some changes in how we're utilizing that. And we've been able, we feel like by the time we get to the end of the year, we're hoping that that'll be reduced by about 40%, just in that one line item because we've had the expenses that have been the most challenging this year, which I'm really thrilled that we're staying, really, we just actually have a whole chart on this relatively within the budget, is the amount of negotiations even that we've had this year. It would be a year where we would have anticipated with our normal special ed spending and all of our negotiations that it would have been a million-dollar a year. So, we're feeling like we're sitting in a very, very good spot with legal and we're getting a better handle on some of those, I think, cost drivers that were really expensive for us.
So, in essence, what you're saying is this year we'll be spending about, if we're 40 over, like 360 less?
Right. We were...
Than the past year.
That's correct. I mean, that's what we're hoping. And the year's not over yet, but we're, we monitor it very, very closely. And I have the last couple of years charted out so that we're really watching that because we feel like that's one area that if we can be more responsible in that area, that's just money we get to shift to the classroom.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, and just the last thing I just want, oh, yeah.
Mrs. Maxon, Kelly.
Just as an exchange, to characterize the reduction in litigation, in legal fees for special ed, does that mean that we're not fighting cases or negotiating cases we would have in the past, which therefore means we're incurring an expense someplace else, which normally we might not have?
No, I would say that, and I think Mr. Mancusi would probably agree with this, we probably have some of the best legal counsel we've had because Ms. Deasy specializes in special education, which is very fortunate for us. And, you know, we're trying not to be litigation-first in that we don't just pick up the phone and call an attorney because, you know, you get in the habit of doing that when you don't have in-house counsel. And when it's, you know, several hundred dollars an hour, every single phone call, you're billed for that. So, we don't have those little phone calls anymore. And when we do need, we have, you know, we need legal advice from outside counsel. She's making that call and knows how to ask the right questions. So, her call could be 10 minutes where, you know, another staff member's might have been 30 or 45 minutes to understand first before you can understand the advice. So, I think we're just doing a really good job. And I see Mr. Mancusi nodding his head. It's, we have a great support system in-house now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Acer.
So, since Mr. Cullen's back up, still up here, and not to beat a dead horse about the electricity thing, but we've signed all these contracts for solar power and everything. And we know that we're, you know, doing it the environmentally friendly, green way and everything. But you mentioned that our contractor had given us, you know, estimates on rates. And I think we've talked about this in past meetings, but can you just refresh my memory? Do we have any ability to go back to them? I mean, are we, to, I mean, they give us these numbers and they're not accurate. Are they accountable?
Well, it's also based on the weather. You know, the more sunny days you have, the stronger quality electricity savings you're getting. So, they're doing...
Sorry, I thought you were talking about the rates because you had mentioned the projected rates. So, the rates are the rates, right?
The rate is the current rate when they sign the contract. When they sign the contract with us, they're using the current rate. They can't project what the rate's going to be for the next 20 years.
But the first year, they've projected it inaccurately?
No, they did not. The first year, they didn't. But in other years, they have.
So, for this, I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm just confused. I'm just trying to understand what you said with regards to the difference.
Yeah, for the schools that we're seeing a second or third year of the solar, we are seeing a discrepancy. But that's also based on the electric rate going up, based on their estimate. So, they keep their estimate the same for 20-year.
So, why is the electric rate going up considered, when I know, I know rates have gone up as far as delivery, you know, charges? Is it the same commercial for residential? Because I know for a while, and even for this past year, until very recently, the actual generation rates have not gone up, but the deliveries have. So, if we're using solar, our delivery shouldn't be going up.
Correct. We also keep in mind the contractor's getting paid for the work they did based on the savings. So, we're not even realizing all of the savings that we're going to be getting. The way the contract's written is there's no money coming from the school system. So, they come in and they do all the work, install all the photovoltaics, do all the electrical hookup, go live. And in the savings we witness, they get paid out of those savings and still their contract's done. Then, we take over all the full savings.
Okay. When does that happen?
So, they're all different based on the contract for each school. I think some of them are three-year paybacks, some are five. And then, we witness all of the savings from that.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Leeper.
I'm just going to follow up. Sorry for all the solar questions. Actually, you have probably not privilege. I just got solar put on my house, so I actually just lived through all this. But is, there are not grants that the state could have given the district to cover all of those installment costs? Because there's like a whole state solar, you know, plan to encourage people to get solar, and you basically don't pay for it.
Yeah. It's a little different for educational facilities.
It is.
It's called a Zrec contract. So, they enter a contract with the utility companies based on a rate that they think they can lock in, based on how many solar panels they can put on a roof or on a carport, based on what the savings is. And they have to first see if it makes money sense to them. You know, are they going to make enough for doing all of the work? And then, issue us the savings in our utility ratings to... And then issue us the savings in our utility ratings to, you know, make it work. We've looked at, to give you an example, we've looked at fuel cells with the town for our schools, and we've had three companies reject them that have come out and looked, and we're very eager to get fuel cell in, but there wasn't enough savings for them to make any money, even when we combined Little Low High School and Rogers Middle School as one campus. So, they have to see if that's all going to work and pay off for them and for the district. So...
And they didn't make any guarantees for production? So, for like my contract, I'm guaranteed production, right? Even if we have cloudy days or three snowstorms in March?
Yeah, they do, but, you know, it's not the kind of thing we can go back to them and say, well, you were off $1,700 this year, and argue with it.
Okay, that's...
As a matter of fact, the biggest issue we've run into that we didn't know about was with Ward High School, we've been having some trouble with a power issue there, and we wanted to shut the solar off to rule out some issues that were happening to it, and we realized there's actually a penalty if it's off too long, something that we researched and probably should have thought about closer. Because if we need to shut a solar system down on a roof for two or three months, we actually have to pay a penalty, because they're basing their payments to them as a contractor on all of the savings. So...
All right. That's disappointing. So, like, for me, I'm guaranteed, and if we don't produce that much, the electric company pays the difference. Like, they're accountable for whatever the production is, and...
Yep, and if you make too much, you probably sell it back to the utility company and all that, yep.
Yeah, and we don't have that for the schools? Because like also, then the rate is locked in. For the next 20 years, I know exactly how much my electricity will cost, like, goes up. And the schools don't get that for the solar panels?
I don't believe we have enough power that we can make enough to sell back to the utilities. The schools are so huge.
Yeah. All right, sorry.
Mrs. Gerber, then, you raised your hand, right? Okay, Mr. Asa.
Just one question, because I know you just mentioned the penalties. So, did we actually have to pay penalties, or did you realize before it was too late?
No, we shut down the system for a week.
Okay.
Were able to do our testing to see, and we could rule it out, and it did work.
Right, because you said it would be like a couple of months with it off.
Right. We had asked them, if we wanted to turn it off for three months and really monitor this building and try and figure out the issues we were having, would they be willing to do that with us?
And they said no.
They said, look in your contract, and fine print said you'd have to pay a penalty after a certain amount of time.
Okay, so, did you figure out what the problem was, though, at Ward, even though you couldn't switch it off?
No. We have ruled out that it's not the solar system, because the breaker still tripped when the solar system was off. But we haven't ruled out that it might have been something the contractor did installing the solar system.
Okay, so, so you don't need to switch off the solar again now, whatever you need, or will you have to switch it off again?
No. We don't have to switch it off again.
So, if it turns out that it was caused by the installation...
What I say by the installation is the contractor has to open up all the breaker panels. He's got to run conduit, he's got to run a lot of wire. So, he had his hands inside the building's electrical systems. That hasn't been ruled out. But the solar system itself, when we had it turned off for a week, the building still tripped the breakers.
Okay, but if it turned out that it was not the system itself, but the work done that caused this problem, would we be able to...
We will.
Get some sort of satisfaction?
Yes, we will. We've got a professional engineer working with us on the things we can do and ask them to produce some safeguarding in that electrical and those panels, and we probably will work with an attorney if we have to.
Okay. So, but you're getting close to figuring it out, hopefully, now?
No. Sorry.
Now?
I wish I could tell you. I've been in this business 40 years, and we cannot figure out what's going on.
Wow, okay.
Just yet, but...
But you're still looking.
We have a lot of good people on, a lot of good professionals. We're ruling things out one at a time.
Right.
It could be due to rain. Of the 17, 18 trips over the past 16, 17 months, probably more than 70% of them, it had rained really hard. Two days later, it has a scratch in our head, sorry.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Asa.
Sorry, but you said something, and now I got to follow up on it. You said, "We're not going to go after if it's $1,700," or whatever. What do you mean by that?
No, if it was, if we're looking at our rates and our savings and putting it next to what the contractor estimated he thought we'd get each year, and it's off by a little bit, I mean, we've spoken with him about it, but we're not going after him. I mean, he estimated based on weather and what he thought we would get for savings per year.
Okay, so, when you say we're not going after him, I guess what I want is just a clear answer, what are our options? Do we have an option to go after him? And if we do, why aren't? You know what I mean? Like, I just, if you could clearly answer that in a quick sentence, that would be great.
I can't, but I'll get some information for you.
Thank you.
Other questions on this document relative to the quarterly? Mrs. Jacobson.
Hi, I just have a couple of questions. My first question is on tuition for magnet schools, the underage that we had. Is that because we had a certain number of students that we expected to go that didn't end up going, or...
That's correct.
It was? Okay. Any, do we know that any particular, they just decided not to go, and, okay. And then, my second question is on the maintenance projects with the 114425, is that from enclosure number two, the explanation on that, the difference, just, I know we're on this one document, but it relates to enclosure number two, correct? Just what was supposed to be, well, what was budgeted versus what's being released?
What line item are you referring to on this document?
I am on line 10 on the colorful chart.
Yeah, and just to clarify, it is, there's the page behind this one, and then there is one more that details the kind of finer projects for you as well. Yeah, but, and everything was released, but there are some where the full amount may not have been spent for various reasons, but that's provided.
So, when we go through those documents, if the 114 doesn't pop out at you, ask that question again.
That's, okay, right, that's what I...
Other questions on this document? If not, on to the next.
She's...
What? Were you done or not?
No, I have one more question.
I'm sorry.
The 916 that we released, that was restored to maintenance from held in reserve funds, there was, according to the budget book, there was 841695 held in reserve in maintenance, and I just want to make sure that I'm understanding, that we, do we just use extra reserve funds to kind of beef up the maintenance line number, or just a little bit? Is that...
Were you seeing that in the budget book? Which, did you say the budget book?
Yeah, for what we had, what we had held in reserve under maintenance was about 842,000.
Where are you getting that number from?
I'm getting it from the budget book.
Okay, what page?
Oh, sure.
Is that this year's?
Yeah. Well, yeah, we never...
No, what, yeah, next year's, okay. What page?
Right, so, held in reserve for this year, I'm 80. And I doesn't, I'm not quibbling, I'm just wondering if we released basically more to maintenance than we had held in reserve.
No, I think, I think the, that's just maintenance services, there's, it's not all in that category.
There's other things.
Right.
In the projects area, there's a difference as well. That's, so that's probably what makes up the difference.
Well, the projects are in the 313. Well, let's see, there might be another report that shows it better. It definitely is a 916.
Okay, no, I understand. I'm just wondering how we came up with the number, that's all. If you, you can email me to it, I don't...
It's shown on all of them. It was the last quarter as well, yeah.
If you look on the, on this report...
Uh-huh.
We added a column, the third column of numbers in, reserve transfers, just so that we could, we could track these separately on the, you'll see the 916 on the second page.
Sorry, a lot of pages.
And then on the third page, is it, third column in, towards the bottom of the page, you see a negative 916?
Bottom of the third page?
On the second page?
On the second page.
Third col, okay, see the negative 916?
From support services, some from support expenses. So, the support expenses, it was subtracted from support expenses and given to...
Right, because that's where, that's where all the reserve money was put. And then page three, you turn the page, page three, the same column, you'll see, there's the 841.
Yep.
But there's a 75,000, that's, that's a different category.
That's what I was looking for.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Anything else? No? So, that's that document, then. Mrs. Vitale.
I'm really struggling with how we're able to give back $600,000 to the town when we did not spend a million dollars of money that was budgeted to us still. And if we had not put money in reserves and we were faced with the special education overage, we would have managed within our budget. We would have cut, you know, cut things and looked for new income. And I guess I applaud the staff for acting so quickly and getting that healthcare savings and getting that extra income. And I think if the money wasn't held in reserves and we just had that extra income and we had, you know, not hired another administrator and not had, you know, done some of the professional development, we would actually be in a better place. And I'm very happy that we revert, you know, released money for maintenance, but I'm still looking at just the money that wasn't spent at the school level and hearing, you know, the music teacher say, I really, you know, I could use an instrument, and the science teacher joke about a microscope, and I'm looking at, you know, $5,000 that was held in reserve for supplies and materials for science, which is the high schools, and I'm wondering, I wonder if they could have gotten that microscope if we had spent that money. So, just wanted to share this struggle for future questions that I might have. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Mrs. Maxon Connolly.
I had felt, I completely agree with Mrs. Vitale. I only didn't voice it because I was waiting till we got to that page.
Yeah, the next page.
Thank you.
I'm hoping we can be more thorough about that when we get there.
So, we're done with this page?
Okay, yep.
We're done with this page? So, Dr. Jones.
So, the second page is where it breaks down where that reserve was, and you can see on the top what those projects are that Mr. Cullen is working through. And again, he does have a more detailed page, bless you, that even shows paving and some other things. But these are those projects that there, the staff are working through right now. What you see on the bottom is where that 1.2, when we talk about closing special education, and what I would say is that our budgeting this year was like any other year. We, we are always going to have areas that are over and that are under, and we basically released everything on reserve, with the exception of these decisions that, again, we make these annually. When you look at homebound instruction, we didn't need that. We froze a bus before the year started and made that commitment, we didn't need it. We knew those two positions at the high school were frozen, and we weren't, we didn't need them in the master schedule. When you look at some of these supplies and like the curriculum work, these are ongoing discussions we have all the time. It's every day, every week, depending on where the needs are. The summer curriculum work, I think, you know, the board knew we weren't doing that last summer, especially when you remember last summer, we didn't even have a budget at the state level. So, we, you know, we were not, at the point, we felt like we were going to be doing summer curriculum work. We needed to rethink how we were approaching curriculum for the year, and I think if you think about all the curriculum that has been presented just this last, you know, several months, we've done a really great job, and we got done the work that we needed to do. But we can't go back now and spend what we didn't spend last summer. When you look at some of that allocation in school supplies, that is normal budgeting. That is not out of the norm, and I think it's important for the board to understand that. And I'm going to say this, even with our two headmasters in the back, but I know they think this way, too. When I was a principal, whether it was elementary or secondary, generally, my entire budget was spent before March, because I knew by March, April, May, it was going to start closing down at central office, because when the gaps are there, that's what you do, you have to close them. And if we need more in snow removal, or we have more special education tuition, it has to come from somewhere, and that's an area that generally you can take little bits from all over your district without impacting anybody hugely. But again, that's normal budgeting, and you generally don't see this level of detail. We're giving it to you now because we want you to understand how, kind of how it has worked for us this year, because it was an unusual year. When you look at the improvement plan, again, that stuff like last summer, we don't feel like, this was, this was an area that we felt like we could still move forward without it. We did what we needed to do. And the same way with our administrative position, we didn't start the year saying, well, we really want to hire that position in January or in November. We knew that was part of our cost-saving measure going into the year. My takeaway from this, more than anything, is that I would like to get us in a budgeting standpoint by approaching especially special education differently, so that we're not seeing gaps of 1.2, 1.3 million, or 1.6 million, so that we're not having to take away from other departments. I think next year, we're going to be in a better place, just in how we're projecting and what we put in the budget this year, and we're really working hard on that so that doesn't happen. But that, that is normal budgeting, and you just hope it's not usually 1.4.
Other comments or questions from board members? Mrs. Vitale.
I do appreciate that it is normal budgeting, and I, and I think that if we hadn't held, well, it's, but we had, we're saying we have $600,000 extra to give back to the town. So, I argue, why did we, why did we cut that? Why did we budget like that? And it's almost like a self-imposed cut that we made to ourselves. That's what it feels like. And I can argue that those schools, the schools could probably spend that money, just blinds. I mean, we're talking about an unforeseen need that has occurred since we approved a budget, which is needed for maintenance, for instruction, for comfort, for security. And, you know, I would like to know how much blinds cost, and if they're within $600,000, I would like to ask the town to pay for those blinds out of this surplus we are seeing, because we wouldn't have the surplus if we didn't pretty much, I guess, were overzealous in putting money in reserves. And I totally appreciate at the time that it was the right decision to make. I guess I wish that we could release more of those funds that were held in reserves, because I see the million dollars that we received in healthcare, you know, savings as really part of budgeting also, the district being fiscally responsible, seeing that we had a shortfall and trying to, you know, identify new revenue sources. So, I applaud you for that, and I understand, you know, wanting to be, you know, good stewards to the town, the town also, they got money from the state that they were not foreseeing this year also, which, you know, I could argue that we can make a play for that, but I won't. Thank you.
Mrs. Jacobson.
Yeah, just following up on Mrs. Vitale's comments, I too have just some concerns about what, how this has been broken out a little bit. So, I understand, I fully appreciate that there are certain things that you can't go back and do and that you can't spend. But I think about the restoration of the funds that we did for next year for our supplies, which is, you know, it kind of, it's a one-line item here, but it goes into many, many, many items.